Mr. Tomio, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor? Five-zero. Could we stand to say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. At first, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of-- Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the minutes of the September 28 business meeting. I have a motion. Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Malolito, all in favor? Five-zero. And then I will hand it over to Dr. Bossert for accommodations this evening.
And it gives me great pleasure to identify that the month of October and the week of October 23rd is designated by New York State School Boards as Board Appreciation Week. And I think it is a well-deserved recognition of boards that operate throughout the state, but particularly relevant for us here in Elwood. The five members of this dedicated team devote so much of their time and sacrifice to their personal interests, to their families, for the betterment of this community and our students. The amount of time that these individuals spend working to make this the premier district that we are can sometimes go unnoticed. And while everyone is aware of the public meetings and some of the committees, the additional work that they do to prepare for that is countless hours. And I wanted to make sure that the board understands how much the administration, the faculty, the staff, and our community appreciates the service that you do each day for our students. So we have some small things to help recognize your efforts. And we also have some bunch things to recognize your efforts. One gentleman who could not be here tonight but wanted to express his appreciation is our local senator, Senator Marcelino. So-- That's it? So, on behalf of Senator Marcelino, I'd like to present the board with this New York State Senate proclamation that reads, "Whereas New York State's commitment to education is unparalleled, its history and stature are secured by the superlative collaborative of its educational professionals and the students they inspire. And whereas each year's School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards and school districts throughout the Empire State, and whereas the men and women serving as members of the school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to public education, and whereas it is important to acknowledge that those outstanding educational leaders whose dedication and achievements have been instrumental in developing character and academic excellence in the young people of New York. And whereas Governor Andrew M. Cuomo proclaimed, "October 23rd through 27th, 2017, School Board Recognition Week," and attended to such concern and in full accord with the longstanding traditions, I am justly proud to honor the Elwood Board of Education, Julia Fried, President, James Tomio, Vice President, and trustees Rebecca Marcus, Heather Malolito, and Deborah Weiss. And whereas the Elwood Board of Education has clearly had an enduring impact on the youth of the Elwood School District as well as the community at large, and accordingly merits recognition and applause for their impressive dedication to others. And whereas we should commend the efforts of those who work to support our proud tradition of public education by providing their skills and talents to our schools, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Senator Carl Marcelino, hereby issue this Senate proclamation to commend the Elwood Board of Education for its significant contributions to education in the state of New York, dated October 23rd, 2017."
Wow.
You can carry it in each one of your homes.
Yes.
Or we will be very proud to display in district office speaker. Whereas-- Whereas here too far-- We've also received recognition for School Boards Week from Western Suffolk Bosse's, who would also like to express their thanks and recognition for your commitment to education in our region and all the wonderful work that you do with our students. So this one is going to be Mrs. Weiss. And Mrs. Malolito. And Mrs. Marcus.
And this one we could put proudly on our mantle.
Mr. Tomio. And Mrs. Fried. But that's not all. In addition-- Your leadership team. Your leadership team. Which means the entire administration of the Elwood School District, not just those present here tonight, have all combined their efforts and have a wonderful gift to be stored upon you that we would like you to open publicly.
Oh, gained a few pounds though.
Oh, it is great.
You may start.
Oh, I love it.
There's a story behind where this is.
There is a story. One of the things that we have implemented just this year with the help of our athletic director and our school leaders is we have moved to Elwood Spirit Fridays. And there are 190 members of our faculty and staff who each Friday will proudly wear their Elwood blue jerseys. And there have been many students and now a few parents who have inquired how they become a member of the team. And the response is unemployed by the Elwood School District. So this is a rare treat that only a select number of individuals are able to don the cherished jersey. And thank you to the Fab Five as you've been identified on your backs for your service. This is on behalf of the entire administrative team. We all chipped in to make sure that you were able to wear your Elwood pride. So please wear it with good health and happiness.
Thank you very much. So I think I'm probably speaking for the whole board that it's really our pleasure to volunteer with such a great group of professionals and a great community to support us. So I appreciate the thanks, and we all do, but it's really our pleasure to serve. Thank you.
And that's not all. In June, we were fortunate to recognize an outstanding number of professionals who were leaving our organization through retirement. And one of those individuals who was recognized that night was my assistant, Mrs. Barkosi, who was joining us here tonight. But the board and I felt it necessary to do two things. To recognize another accomplishment Mrs. Barkosi has achieved since June, which would be her 20 years of service to the Elwood School District. And in recognition of this being her last Board of Education meeting before she formally leaves the district on Monday, which is her last day. She did not want to work Halloween because of the coronary costumes. So Monday is her last day with us. And Nancy, I've said this before privately and certainly publicly, you are an indispensable resource to this district. You will be greatly missed. You have done so much to help in my transition to this position. And for the 19 years before that, to make sure that this board ran effectively, to make sure the offices ran effectively, you've done it with professionalism, style, and grace. And I will miss our teamwork, and I will miss our friendship. And I know the board has some things they would like to share as well.
So I echo all that, Nancy. And just as you helped Ken transition, you helped all of us transition. And I'm sure many of us before are in this group. So you always were friendly to us and extended a helping hand when we were new. And we can pick up the phone at any time and ask you a question. I think that Mr. Tomio has prepared a few remarks because your husband, I think, was his instructor, right?
He was my professor for three semesters.
So I think James wants to say a few words, but thank you.
Phil, if I come up to the podium, you'll see my back, so it's best I-- Good evening. So I have the honor of recognizing one of our longtime employees who is embarking on her journey into retirement. In speaking with her husband, Jim, I was able to get some great insight about who Nancy truly is. Nancy's grandparents were immigrants that migrated to New York, which is where Nancy was born and raised. Aspiring to be a teacher, she attended Ford University on a full-ride scholarship. She never did quite become a classroom teacher, but she did make a huge impact in the schools. Instead, she worked for several prestigious patent attorneys where she owned her incredible proofreading skills. Her responsibility was to make sure the language for the patents were seamless. Nancy and her husband raised three beautiful daughters. During that time, she was heavily involved in the PTA and chaired many school functions. I had to ask Jim, do they have any male dogs in the house to at least balance out the male-female ratio? And his response was no. All female dogs, except they did have at one time one male pup. The story does equal that, I promise. As I go further, Nancy's three daughters gave them three amazing grandsons. It is my understanding that all three daughters live out of state, and that during retirement, Nancy and Jim plan on doing a lot of traveling. One daughter is in St. Louis now, who was in Colorado? Switched that up on me, okay. One in Connecticut and one upstate New York. I promised Jimmy he'd have some male bonding to look forward to. Retirement also for Nancy with more family time and the opportunity to not have to deal with the intricacies of helping make the school district run. Throughout her career in Elwood, Nancy has had the opportunity to work for five different superintendents with all different personalities. Dr. Bossert's obviously being the easiest to deal with.
Favorite superintendent at this stage.
That's because she sees the finish line. You are a pillar in our organization, and you have been the backbone to the central office for many years. Nancy, I thought to myself, what really is retirement? I don't think about it too often because for me, it seems a long time away. As I sat down to write this, though, I questioned, what's the definition of retirement? So I looked it up. It simply states, "The action or fact of leaving one's job and seizing to work." The board, your colleagues, and everyone in Elwood hopes you do just that. Take this chapter of your life and seize to work. One of my favorite songs is by Tim McGraw. It's called "In My Next Thirty Years." One of the lines from the song is, "Spend precious moments with the ones that I hold dear, make up for the time in my next thirty years. In your next thirty years, be joyful, relaxing, family-centered, and the best day of your life. You've earned it. Elwood will miss you, and we wish you nothing but the best in your retirement."
Now, what's kind of funny here, Nancy, is that we put together a certificate of appreciation, but as you didn't know about it, you didn't remind me to have Julie sign it. I'm gonna present it to you, then you're gonna present it back to me. And just one other little funny anecdote. I asked Nancy what her first quarter of business was upon retirement. Do you recall how you answered that question, Mrs. Barkosi? She mentioned she had a dentist appointment too. So this is just a excuse from me personally to give you another option.
For, we got you something to enjoy your retirement.
Beautiful flowers for beautiful women.
All right, Alana, how would you like this pose?
A car in the center and all around here.
For like a vision of love.
Maybe take the card. Ready? One, two, three. And we're flush. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Standing out.
And another thing I was negligent in. Alana requested a picture of the board of educators on so we could put up the board recognition. If you wouldn't mind.
I was just thinking, this might not-- I'll hold on.
And if you could just put that her--
You want us to do the better? Yeah, you sent to his weight.
Oh, you didn't have to put it on.
You pulled back, I could wear it to my suit jacket.
Are they going backwards?
So you know what, you can back up in the middle and then look.
Yeah, that's perfect, perfect. We're tiny, but we're podiums in the way.
Perfect.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
Holiday card. I missed my dog.
She doesn't wear an owner, right?
I do love the jersey.
I'm so excited about this jersey. He looks like nerds. Like nerd camp.
And as they say, curragi le ships, and that's not all. Yes, there is more. We have one other group here tonight that would like to express appreciation to the board for supporting and sponsoring an upcoming initiative. So for that, I would like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Tiscana, who we know very well, and our guest from the nerd world, Joellen McCarthy. If you'd like to come up and take us through.
First of all, this couldn't be-- This couldn't be a better night for us to show you what's gonna happen here on the board. But you are a wonderful board, and you supported this really sight unseen. And I-- we appreciate that trust. Now we're gonna show you just how amazing it is.
I just said that to me, like, everybody seems so great. And, you know, there's so much support, and it's wonderful because your support has allowed us to have literacy and learning here and have a celebration around literacy and learning. So that, to me, is what I do every day and the work that I do with the district. So to see that you guys didn't know what nerd camp was and you signed on, it's amazing. This actually began a few years ago through an organization called the Nerdy Book Club. There's an actual group called Nerdy Book Club. If anybody goes on Twitter--
I'm a member, you should be too.
You are all unofficial members because it's a group and organization of educators, authors, illustrators, who blog every day and share with the community things that are going on in the world of literacy and ways to really get kids excited about reading, writing, and learning. And so the Nerdy Book Club group, a few years ago, decided, you know, they have all of these EdCamp models, which are pretty unstructured conferences. And we should do a nerd camp version, which is just literacy-based. So it started a few years ago in Michigan, and now it's evolved. And I'm proud to say that this is the third year that we're doing this. First year was hosted at East Williston. Last year was hosted in Jericho, and you guys are hosting for the third year. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
What did you say?
I said, and I never want to go anywhere else. I'm not kidding. I love everybody, but I live closest to Elwood. It's really convenient to come back and forth.
So Joellen is a reading specialist and a literacy consultant. She is also the book ambassador for Literature Collaborative. Educates later. And then she presents all over the nation. So it's really a pleasure that I have such a nerd that I learn from. So I didn't even know what this was until she said, "You have to get up early and come with me to this nerd camp." And I'm glad, no, she put me to work, and ever since then, she's like, "We have to have it in Elwood." So we just thought it'd be nice maybe if you saw what the day was going to be like. And we are hoping that you'll come, and you can go up and sign up and actually get your own ticket. So we want to do a huge thank you to the board. Again, we appreciate the support you gave us, but more importantly, the chance that you're gonna give this community because you're gonna see what educators are gonna learn, but the wonderful opportunity for the students. Here is a list of all of the sponsors. I, of course, did not get the sponsors, Joellen did.
Well, just it goes to show that, you know, not only are school districts supporting this work, but professional organizations like many of the educators-- Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I apologize. Many of the organizations that support literacy and learning, again, in schools with professional resources, with other opportunities like conferences and things like that, and they're donating tons of materials so that there can be raffles for teachers because who doesn't love a free giveaway, right? So I have books coming almost every day to my office mailbox. And I have also, like, subscriptions for teachers to do year-long studies online and opportunities for teachers to meet with authors. Or, here's the best part, because I am a nerd, signed copies of some of the hottest books. Although we have 60 authors and illustrators who are coming live in person, we have authors who are sending us copies of their books and saying, you know, "Please give this away," signed copies that are-- I mean, I get a little excited. For me, if we can get kids to be excited about reading and writing, it's a home run. So that's how really this started in this evolution to be about kidlit rock stars. I don't want kids to know who the Kardashians are. I don't want them to know about the sports players who are role models. I want them to view authors and illustrators as rock stars. So it's great because look at all the people who are supporting us with some financial backing, which is obviously something that's coming here and just hosting the materials as well.
And I'd like to point out that the Elwood Booster Club has donated, and they helped us decorate with 100 balloons for the day, so it could be a really good party. And also the Suffolk County School Superintendent Association. Thank you, sir.
And the Bagel Cafe, which I don't know-- I think that's kind of important because we started, it was kind of a bad precedent. We decided that we provide lunch. But when I go to other states and we have nerd camps, they don't provide lunch. But here on Long Island, we do. And so each year, as the conference grows, it's like, that's a wonderful thing, but are we still providing lunch? The Bagel Cafe in this neighborhood, Greg, who is the owner, was so on board. He said, "I'm so excited to support something like this. I will donate whatever you need." And we do, you know, have a fee, a small fee, but like a very minimal amount because he just wants to be part of this. So I just wanted to mention that so that you know if you go in there.
So please use the Bagel Cafe.
Yeah, yeah.
We do. So we really wanted you to know what nerd camp is. It's really a sort of Nerdy Book Club, like Joellen said, and it's combined with EdCamp. It's just basically focused on literacy and celebrating authors.
Oh, so I just wanted you to see Penelope. Can you see Penelope's face? I don't know if it's too dark. But her enthusiasm and her excitement, you know, getting a book by Mo Williams signed. He wasn't present at that event that we were at, but I brought her a book signed by Mo Williams. That's the kind of look you will see on a regular basis throughout that day. Not just from the kids who are coming during the day, at the end of the day for the meet and greet, but for the teachers who are there. And mind you, all of the teachers who come are coming because they are choosing to be there on a Saturday. No one's getting paid, it's all volunteer. It's truly nerds, but it's passionate professionals. And to be able to host it here and know that the majority of your staff is attending and supporting this is a wonderful thing. It's really, really exciting. It's personalized PD. And Florence and Noble is actually going to provide support in terms of pre-orders, which I was talking with you about earlier, so people don't want to stay online. I mean, last year, we had over 400 teachers throughout the day. And at the end of the day, we had probably about 200 kids with their parents filling Jericho's auditorium. And what happened was, it was divine for people to get the books. It was just a nightmare. So we had pre-orders, and it's just, it's great because the whole time that's going on, the author is following around the room. And so people can go and talk with them and get their photos taken with them and get signatures. So that on the bottom, which I had to throw in there, is Cap'n Applegate. If you guys know the one and only Ivan, which they're turning into a movie now, that's me meeting Cap'n Applegate. I'm just as excited as Penelope, in case you couldn't tell.
If you have Mo Williams signed, look, the next one is to me.
Okay.
Not Penelope.
Sorry.
So really, we wanted just to tell you what to expect because you probably have no idea. So when we walk in in the morning, it's really chaotic, and everybody comes in and they sign in. And we actually use Everbright, which really can just scan your barcode. That's why you would sign in for a ticket. Then we make our breakout sessions, which you'll see a sheet, which we'll go through the whole thing. We actually go in and have a SARA, which we have Maureen Hall starting off for us to welcome all of the educators that are coming. Then the meet and greet, and then the book signing. We've got some pictures to really give you a view. So here are our picture book authors and illustrators, and I'm telling you, I'm really excited. So can I just say one thing? Yeah, go right ahead. I swear we won't take a lot of your time. This is like it. We get really excited. But just so you know, like, "Come With Me" was written up in the New York Times recently because it is such an amazing book that has a powerful message about kindness. And there was a huge article that was written up, and they highlighted, actually, four of the books that were highlighted, three of the authors of those books are coming to nerd camp. So that's pretty amazing. And those are the things, that, you know, picture books are ageless. And so if you can say that Holly McGee, who will come with me, is going to be there, I think that's pretty exciting. And anyway, I just wanted to point that out because sometimes people look and they go, "Oh, picture books." Picture books are powerful for any age. Okay, cut. Next, we have early chapter books, which we all know that if children really get hooked on chapter books, especially series, that their reading, you know, their reading levels grow. Right, rapidly. Then we also have middle grade authors, which could be through three through five, but this is mostly six through eight. So I really want to make sure that the middle school students know they'll leave some things there for them as well.
I have to pay my two cents.
Go ahead.
I have to pay my two cents because I want you to be here and tell the kids and your own family members. So "So Be It" is a book that was written by Sarah Weeks. It just turned into a movie, so it's in the theaters right now. Sarah is coming. She also wrote another book that's called "Save Me a Seat." She co-authored that book. And both Sarah and the co-author will be there. That's getting turned into a movie. These are the things that you have to tell the kids, right? I know, I know that, you know, some of you, obviously, as board members, are not in the classroom with the students, but you have to spread that message. And "Fish in a Tree" by Linda Molly Hunt is just one of the most amazing books. And here's a little secret. The after-party is at Seven Quarts in Northport, and the after-after-party is at my house. A lot of them are coming. Linda's staying with me, so you guys can come. Drink wine, and then it's wine and books.
All right, so, right. So the night before nerd camp, the first year, Linda Molly Hunt was there, and she wrote "Fish in a Tree." And that's a good book. So when I saw her, I was like this, "Oh!" Right? I couldn't even say hello. That's how, like, excited I was. And by Sunday morning, I was making her eggs, and we were buddies, and she was inviting me to Kate Cot. Like, that's just, to me, amazing. We also have young adult authors. So even if your high school students want to come, there are books for you as well.
Todd Strasser is coming. Whoever we that was using to help me high school for so many years--
It's natural for me to-- It's natural for me to. So really, this is what the day is about. It's about kidlit rock stars. These authors volunteer their own time. They pay for their own plane tickets, they pay for their own hotels, and they come just because they want to help teachers and students with a love of literacy. And that just blows my mind that they would do that. So what is an unconference? I'm gonna let Joellen explain that to you, because she does it the best.
Just really briefly, it's personalized PD. No one is setting the agenda. So people come together, and the teachers could say, you know, "Oh, I really love to learn about such and such." Or, "I feel really knowledgeable about, you know, using a certain type of-- could be a tech tool." Or, "I really want to learn more about how to get kids to write poetry." And they just have conversations, and then that becomes the agenda. The exciting thing about the nerd camp is that many of the authors and illustrators are running those workshops for the teachers. So here's an opportunity where they get to learn from the professional authors and then take that back to the classrooms and be able to share, "You know what I learned from?" Because that's the work that I do, the mentor authors I talk to kids about. So here's teachers coming and saying, "I learned this from Charles Smith." Or, "I learned this from Peter Calonado." Oh, never, that may be. Which Peter Calonado, by the way, is coming. He's a former student-- Of Elwood, from Elwood.
Is that where he was from?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Welcome to nerd camp.
Nerds are too cool, I'm just saying.
So that's a picture of what happens. You get post-its, and people just put the post-its on the board. So if you're not really aware, I keep saying that unconference and unconference, there's no set agenda, it gets set that morning. And it's also a great networking opportunity.
So you put the post-it up of what you want--
Yeah, people are milling around, talking, having conversations, and somebody says, "Oh, my gosh, Linda's here. Her middle grade book is so great because it deals with a student who has dyslexia. I wonder if we could do a session on how to help kids who are reluctant or resistant readers? Would anybody be interested in that?" And the next thing you know, somebody will say, Linda will say, "Oh, yeah, I would love to do that." And then she'll pair up with a teacher who says, you know, "I, I would love to talk about some strategies around that." Or, an illustrator will be there, and he'll say, you know, "My newest book, I really want to share with teachers ways that they can get kids to draw, or to write, or to understand the power of illustration studies in books." And it's just a conversation. And you see how excited we get? You have to just come in the morning to see people.
Just to see.
It is amazing. And then you see people like, "Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, they're so, so..." And people are just, you know, inviting conversations to say, "Let's collaborate, let's make it about a collaborative learning experience." Which is why the ed camp model is so successful. In many schools, they're doing superintendent's conference days as ed camp models as well. That's another story. We can talk about that later. But this you have to save, because this is what Denise said.
All right, so honestly, I really did this for the, for the fifth grade class, because they started their journalism unit, they need something like to write and see. So I really handed it up, but it got out there, so it's out there anyway. So you're gonna see what a nerd I am.
Oh, did you push the camp even a shelter?
Okay. Hi, everybody. Such awesome news. At Boyd Intermountain in the Jamaican, we are going to have sixty or more authors of every genre of every book. I am so proud that our school gets to hold this author meeting group. And we are welcoming all of our students to come. So on Saturday, November 4th, you can come here, our parents get downstairs, and you can meet all the authors that are gonna be here. I know you all love Charles Smith Jr. He's gonna be here. I know you all love Verde, who wrote Water Princess. She's gonna be there. It is gonna be sensational. Even the author of Fish In A Tree, Linda Malley Hunt, is gonna be here. This is a can't-miss experience. This is beyond my dream. I'm so happy to share it all with you. You're gonna be getting bookmarks, just like these on cards back. It tells you the date, and the time, and where it is. It also has a barcode, and this barcode will connect you to all of the authors' books that are going to be here on that day. So I'm so excited to share this happy news, and I hope that you all take advantage of this. Sorry, guys. You knew it, you just didn't really know it till you saw it.
And you agreed to it. I knew all of you to it, you know, without seeing what the nerd camp is about. And so I have to just thank you, because honestly, people are, I mean, it's a very fortunate position to be in, because I work in so many districts, and I work outside of New York as well. So I'm, I'm behind the scenes planning. And people are coming to me like saying, "Can we host, can we host?" Like, almost writing that. Like Hank from Jericho is saying, "Can we do a gathering? That'd be great." Every year, it becomes the enthusiastic, who gets to celebrate the nerd camp? Because teachers will come, if it's in their district, and your teachers will be here, and you have teachers and students, and it goes both ways. Choice, choice empowers all learners. So I'm really excited for that. You're hosting here. I thank you, thank you, thank you. And I hope to see you on November 4th, or as I like to say, Nerd November 4th.
Oh, boy.
Do you have a question? Do you have shirts? Does anyone have questions?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
I, I just wish you were more enthusiastic.
It's a little flat.
It's a lot flat, right? I thought so. So, from two to three...
Thirty.
Thirty.
From two to three thirty.
Two to three thirty is students.
Students and parents off their meet and greet.
From eight to two are educators.
Educators, all over the state.
But that's for anyone.
Anyone.
Somebody works in another district, all they have to do is go on their nerd camp website and register.
Right now, we have 426 people signed up.
From all different districts.
Okay. Perfect. Oh, my gosh, I'm so excited.
You are too.
Thank you so much.
So, in order to thank you again, not that I want to overkill the shirts or anything, but we felt that you guys were nerds to begin with, because you just said yes. So we have now... Well, I don't know. We have now appointed you official nerds.
Thank you.
So if we can get a picture with you with your nerd shirts?
Another shirt!
And you can wear them on Saturday, because...
It's a photo opportunity.
When you married Rich, that was it.
So you can put the shirt over the jersey.
I've been in nerd camp, I've been in nerd camp for thirty years.
Ready, one, two, three. Did the flashlight go off?
Nope.
I need a band-aid for mine.
Well, it shouldn't be on, so I guess it's bright enough for the flashlight to be on. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It starts at eight.
Thank you so much.
For the tea, I was admiring the tea.
Well, as Mrs. Green said, just next time, bring some passion with you. But I would like to publicly thank and commend our, our nerd team. Joellen and Denise have spent countless hours on this. The number of volunteers that have come forward within the school district to service committee to help with planning, Mrs. Hall and so many of our teachers.
Mr. Tranquina.
Mr. Tranquina, to get the technology working, and just so many pieces of the puzzle are coming together, that I know this will be a wonderful event for our community, a wonderful addition to the educational world. And I just thank you so much for helping to bring it to Elwood, and best of luck on the event.
Thank you.
Okay, Elwood lovely, Emma Costa, update on the district. Fall's school president, John Glenn Husker.
Hello, I'm happy to be here again, presenting on behalf of John Glenn. Many exciting things have happened since we last spoke. To get logistics out of the way, the middle of the first quarter has ended, and was marked by the sending out of progress reports. They are now posted for the middle school and the high school on the parent portal. The high school has had a very busy few weeks. We are just coming off the energy-filled days of Spirit Week and their culmination in homecoming. The homecoming parade was truly something to be seen this year, as each grade showcased talent and dedication with fantastic floats. Students had a lot of fun creating their video game-themed floats, and the community enjoyed seeing them drive down the street Saturday morning. Our football team had a successful homecoming game, defeating Amneville 41 to 13. Their record, their record currently stands at four to three. Spirit Week was five days of high-energy Elwood pride, all leading up to pep rally. Each grade demonstrated their commitment and joy in being members of the Elwood community. Thrilling things are happening in our Elwood athletics outside of football as well. Just today, the boys' soccer team won their first playoff game, and perhaps the most exciting soccer game I have been to in a long time. Coming back from 3-0, the boys played their hearts out and sent the stands into a tizzy. Glenn tied up things at three to three with only 15 seconds left in the game. Going on to win shortly after was a goal only seconds into overtime that sealed our fate. The football team even begged to begin practice late so they could stay there to support their classmates, and everyone was so happy to have them there with their spirit as they rushed the field after the game-winning goal. Currently, the boys' soccer record is 15 to 2, and they will go on to play the second round of playoffs on Monday. Our girls' soccer team is also having a fantastic season, with 13 wins and only four losses. They too won their first playoff game, and will go on to Shoreham to play their second tomorrow afternoon. The girls' tennis season has come to an end. The girls learned how to work hard and be a team, important lifelong skills. The girls' volleyball team has had a fantastic season as well. Independent gymnasts Katie Coroda and Katie Getz have brought great pride to John Glenn, competing on behalf of our school with the Walt Whitman Gymnastics Team. We wish all of our athletes good luck as they advance into playoffs and any continuing on this season. The high school has also had their first lockdown drill this week, with the Suffolk County Police on campus to monitor and advise the process. The officers were very impressed with the way students and faculty has handled themselves in this situation. The juniors had a wonderful celebration with their class ring breakfast. All juniors were invited down to enjoy bagels and refreshments, while those who ordered their class rings received them. We are lucky to have so many wonderful resources at the high school, ranging from our counseling center to our AIS Center. As I had mentioned last meeting, the counseling center is working hard to increase students' exposure to the college process. Just today, we had a college consortium with over 50 schools coming in, and giving the seniors opportunities to ask questions and get information. Admissions representatives from St. Joseph's and CW Post have even pushed into freshman seminar classes to set up a strong foundation, understanding of expectations and goals for the freshmen that have four years to continue in high school. Along with the counseling center, the high school is looking to promote their academic intervention services. Schedules can be found on the John Glenn website. Students can view schedules and make appointments. Accessing these services is a wonderful way to strengthen the parent-teacher connection and increase the ability of students and parents alike to reach out for support. We have a number of groups and individuals to be recognized for their outstanding achievements in everything from music to community service to academics. The band and kickline had incredible performances at the Newsday Festival. They worked hard to prepare and rewarded with a wonderful experience. Junior Elizabeth Choi was accepted into the All-State Symphony Orchestra. Hannah Kleiman, who was one of the ninth graders from last year to be selected to participate in the federal court summer program, received the Best Attorney Award for competing, for complete, after completing this program. The Honor Society and the girls' varsity soccer team showed their support for those affected by breast cancer, as they joined together to walk in the annual Jones Beach Breast Cancer Walk. Nicole Correa and her ASL students, Ryan Booty, Jennifer Brunson, Rebecca Francica, Emily Hovannick, Shawna Rice, Brianna Rosenbach, Jennifer Smalls, Tori DiDiego, Laura Taylor, and Olivia Kelly volunteered at the Manor School for the Deaf's annual fall festival. John Glenn students have participated at this event for the past nine years. The students raised $220 on Saturday, as they gathered their tips from working and the packing and delivery station. The funds were then donated back to the Millneck Manor School for the Deaf Organization. Catherine Brown and Catherine Reyes were both recognized as valedictorian and splulatorian respectively for the class of 2018, as well as Brendan Harrigan and Joseph Francis being recognized for their outstanding performances on the PSATs. Congratulations to these students on their hard work and tremendous achievements. We are looking forward to many exciting things in the month to come. To just name one, the Natural Helpers Retreat will take place next weekend. It's an incredible opportunity for students of all walks of life to bond and connect, as well as ensure that these students have the skills to provide and support their peers with guidance and anything else they may need in their next four years of high school. Between academics, athletics, and extracurriculars, the high school is buzzing with life. I look forward to updating you again in November with more excellent and exciting news. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much, Emma. Between the lack of enthusiasm and the unprepared, that was wonderful. Thank you. So I guess we're at... Superintendent of School, I'm sorry.
So, okay, I don't particularly care for following on the debriefing. Thank you, Ms. Costa. Outstanding job. And you've covered 90% of everything in the district, so I have very little left to report. Sincerely, thank you very much. One update, I did want to give to the Board of Education, two updates. One is that we held the first meeting of the Legislative Committee last night, that is co-chaired by Mr. Tommy and Ms. Emilio. And at that time, we discussed a number of issues, but one of the things that was done is we, is we identified what would be our legislative priorities for advocacy this year. So this is a document that was created by the Long Island Coalition of School Superintendents, which encompasses leaders from both Nassau and Suffolk County, working jointly on a committee to make sure that we are identifying the correct areas for advocacy. And the four issues that were addressed for this year, three, four, five, were: Providing predictable and equitable school funding, supporting shifting student needs, developing meaningful teacher and principal evaluations, and fully funding future mandates. And this document will be placed on the district website tomorrow, underneath the Board Committee's tab, with the agenda and the minutes from yesterday's meeting, along with some other adjoining documents that were shared during yesterday's meeting. But I wanted to make sure the board had a copy of this document prior to it being posted for the public. And in addition to that, there was one initiative that was really born from a conversation that took place here, some questions raised by parents and some board members, that led us to, that led us to want to take action on a specific item for advocacy. And that's involving multiple pathways for, for graduation. So I, I went ahead, and with the blessing of the co-chairs of the Legislative Committee, scribed a letter that will also be posted to our website tomorrow, signed by myself and the Legislative Co-Chairs, but I wanted the board to be fully aware of the initiative before doing so. So this is addressed to Commissioner Ilya, and it reads, "As Superintendent of Public School District in Suffolk County, along with the Board of Education, I strongly encourage you to continue to explore multiple pathways for all students. Many parents, boards of education, and school administrators are concerned about the loss of the Individualized Education Program, IEP Diploma. We are aware of the perception that exists within communities that a document that is termed anything other than a diploma is not sufficient following many years of education. We also have great concerns that prospective employers do not have sufficient understanding of any document identified as something other than a diploma. We have learned of students having difficulty entering the workforce on the successful completion of high school because of this lack of recognition. As we continue to focus on having our students graduate as college or career-ready, we find this an unfortunate obstacle for some students attempting to gain employment immediately after completing their individualized high school program. We urge you to utilize the definition of diploma as the successful completion of a course of study. This will allow us to be more widely utilized and encompass many varied pathways that students travel as they move through the public education system. Countless numbers of students engage each day in a course of study that is individually and specifically designed to meet their needs and maximize their full potential. It seems inequitable to withhold a diploma after this individualized program has been successfully completed. We thank you for your courage in having this conversation and asking for input. We understand that this is not easy work, and urge you to provide continued flexibility to principals and superintendents to make diploma determinations for all students who are in need of flexible, individual pathways." So we have let a prepared triple sign representing myself and the Board of Education to be sent to the Commissioner's office, and CC to the entire Board of Regents. And to coincide with that, the Suffolk County Council of School Superintendent's Legislative Committee is also prepared to send memo under that letterhead with some, with very similar text included to the Commissioner and the Board of Regents. We want to make sure this is a topic that's on the front burner rather than the back burner, because we feel it's the right thing to do for our students. So I assume we have the Board's support to move forward with this advocacy effort. And I thank you for that. The only other item is a reminder that we do have some events upcoming to make sure residents are fully informed about our November 28th bond initiative. On the 8th of November, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., we'll be holding tours in each of our four facilities to highlight areas that would be addressed under that capital bond. So we will initiate tours from the, from the main entrances of each of our schools at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, and 6:30, hoping to include, conclude those tours by 7 o'clock. And then on Tuesday, we would have a last community forum on Tuesday, November 20th at 7:00 p.m. in the middle school auditorium, where we will once again go through all of the elements included in the bond initiative, so that residents can make a fully informed vote when they do cast a ballot on the 28th. So we want to make sure that that is well-publicized. All of you as residents should have received a postcard reminding of those initiatives very recently. And we have included a special bond initiative tab at the bottom of our webpage, where every presentation made, some informative videos, and all of the newsletter information that we've concluded is all collected in one place, which includes an interactive calculator, so that individual homeowners can use their own tax assessment to measure the impact that the bond would have on their individual household. So hopefully, all of our voters are informed voters, and we will look forward to the 28th. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. So we're up to residents' remarks, our first residents' remarks. The Board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and in the section of the agenda, forcing the opportunity to speak, persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization represented at the meeting. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others in which the reputation, privacy, or right to do process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Any residents' remarks? Seeing none, we'll get to audit presentation.
All right, Ella. I just want to, we're okay? I just want to explain a change from the agenda. We do have the audit report that was prepared by Mary Ann Van Dunn from RS Abrams, our external auditor, which has previously, previously been shared with the Audit Committee in an executive session meeting of the Audit Committee specifically, which I know they have accepted this report and are recommending to the Board for acceptance as well. Mary Ann had an emergent conflict this evening. So after consulting with members of the Board, Mrs. Lachman will be making the presentation that was once, that was already been proposed to the Audit Committee to help alleviate that conflict. There is a, there was another district she represents that had a more emergent item come up through the comptroller's office this evening, and a very crowded board meeting. And since that was somewhat difficult news they were receiving and needed explanation, I felt it was the right thing to do for our neighbor to allow Mary Ann to present there. And Mrs. Lachman is fully capable of sharing the good news, you know, within our audit here. However, if the Board has any questions that Mrs. Lachman cannot answer, we would prepare them in writing and submit them to Mary Ann for response directly through the Board. So please do not hesitate to raise any questions or concerns you do have through the presentation. And if Mrs. Lachman is unable to speak to them, Mrs. Van Dunn certainly will.
So this is just a review of the 2016-17 external audit report.
So this is just a review of the 2016-17 external audit report. Audit Committee received their report about October 4th, I think it was, early in October. It was due for submission to State Education Department by October 15th, so we're in compliance with that. At this time, we're going to go over the highlights of that report. The board all has a copy of the financials, and they will be posted on the website tomorrow once the board accepts receipt of them this evening. So we received an unmodified opinion on the June 30th, 2017 financials. There was no material weaknesses in the internal controls. And our office, along with RS Abrams, worked together to get through this process. We start this process around the spring, April, and we go all the way through until we finish it, which is usually around September 30th. The management letter is not a requirement of the financial statements, but it is something that the auditors will do to help us with internal controls and improve on our processes. So it was issued to identify certain areas that we could use improvement on. Parental personnel was one area, extra classroom accounts was another, and the school lunch fund. And we'll go a little bit further on in the presentation as to what those were. There were no material weaknesses identified during the audit, which means there was nothing significant that we had a break of, or any fraud or anything like that. It was just some things that we can maybe improve on processes for. Management, my team was proactive in taking all the recommendations that we received from the Audit Committee and from the auditors back in April all the way through the process, and we've been addressing them immediately. The internal recommendations that were noted on last year's management letter, we have successfully implemented, or at least partially implemented on some of them, and we're continuing to work now on the current year findings. So some highlights from the governmental funds. This is all the reserves that we have in place. You can see in fiscal year 2016, our reserves were at 5.6 million. We closed fiscal year 2017 at just over $7 million. It's a 24% increase. Our school lunch fund went from $25,000 down to $19,000. And later on, I know on the slide, there is explanation of that, that that is more so because we were able to charge further expenses that the general fund picks up over to the school lunch fund as they're starting to see profit again. We're starting to transfer those charges that we had originally taken back over to that program. So this just kind of goes through the different reserves, and I'll get into that in the next report presentation that I'm going to give the board, so I'll go over this in a little bit. Capital projects funds, they also have a reserve account, and you can see there is a slight increase while we do not have a capital bond out there. We are working on the Smart Bond project, and that flows through the capital reserve. So we started that project. We have money due to the district from the state based on the work that we've done already at the end of the year. So you'll continue to see this flow, especially with the hopes that a bond passing, we will be able to start using this fund a little bit more actively. So total fund balance has increased 1.3 million, or almost 25% in the current year, which was due to revenue in excess of expenditures and some other financing sources which the board is well aware we received. They have $1 million from BK Elwood. Some of our revenues came in higher, and our expenditures came in lower, which we were able to succeed throughout the course of the year. The increase in restricted fund balance of 1.1 million in the general fund was due to the retirement reserve contribution, which was about 1.1 million, and half a million of that was also from the BK Elwood money. The decrease in fund balance for the school lunch fund, as I mentioned earlier, was about 24%, and that was due to charging employee benefits, retirees' benefits over to the school lunch fund, where we've always paid for that out of the general fund. In the 2016-17 school year, we transferred that cost over to school lunch. And we'll continue to monitor that every year as we see how the school lunch fund is going each year. Increase in fund balance in capital projects, $15,000, was due to the Smart Bond. So overall, the fiscal health is doing well. We have, with the board assistance and the leadership that we have going here, we're on a good path. We have cost-effective purchasing procedures in place. We've committed to funding reserves. We're improving curriculum and community support. So all of these things combined, we're starting to see a turn of events, and we're on a positive upscale going forward. As you know, it's important to understand where our fiscal health is. It's important to have good fiscal health. It's for our tax levy, our cash flow. We reduce our borrowing and interest costs when we get analyzed by Moody's. We improve our credit rating. The funds that are unbudgeted contingent expenses that are there, we're able to maybe fund those going using reserves. We are able to fund shortfalls in state aid, and we're able to preserve our programs and potentially grow them as we continue to grow our reserves and the health of our These I'll go over quickly, as I don't get too much in depth with these. These are Mary Ann's slides. But some things that we've had to deal with this year on the reporting side, they don't affect the actual numbers of the financial statements. There's various levels that we have to do with our financials. They do get converted over to what you would normally see in a corporation, as opposed to how a school district operates. Gatsby 77 was tax abatement disclosures. The only one that we have in place was the pilot agreement for the elderly home. I forget where it is right now. First of all, thank you. We have to disclose what the pilot payment is, what the agreement is, how long it will last, what the projected assessments are of that. And so we work in coordination with the town and the IDEA that manages the pilot in order to obtain that information and disclose all the financials. Gatsby Statement Number 82 became effective in June of 2016. It modifies 67, 68, and 73. I think this one, yes, this is for the pension liability. We receive this information from the employee retirement system and the teachers' retirement system. It's the full liability, full valuation liability on the district. So therefore, what you'll see on the financial statements is actually a very large deficit as there's no longer an asset. It's all a liability, and this is all changing again. So coming next year, that number is going to almost double or triple. So it's very hard to explain. When you read the numbers, it's kind of disturbing, but it's important to know that that's not the operation of the district. That is, if the pension system was to close today, that that's what the liability number is for the district. Gatsby Statement Number 75 is the OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is not effective as of yet. It will become effective in this current fiscal year. Questions on that piece? I will pinky tap it if there are none. Anybody? It's exciting. Stop, come on. I'm not excited as you nerds, but nerd in my own way.
Yes, you are, Kelly.
The board also has in their board packet, I think it's in TIPS, a fund balance annual report, which is required by our policy. Policy 6020 talks about our fund balance and reserve funds that we have in place. And this is just an update as to what reserves we currently have, the definition of the reserves, when they were established from the district, either if it was a district initiative, a board, or voters, how much money is in there, what we can use them for, and how we can use them. We currently have four that are in place, the employee benefit accrued liability, the retirement contribution, debt service, and unemployment insurance. The unassigned fund balance is the maximum 4%. Just so everyone's aware, which was not highlighted in there, we are fully funded at 4% at this point in time at the close of these books. And we are looking forward to the future that we should continue that fully funded 4%. That's the goal. That is, I know the goal of the board, and that's the goal of my office, is to manage those monies so that we can be there. In addition to it, you'll see there is an attached spreadsheet, which is just a basic summary. It takes everything you have in that large packet of 70-something pages of financial statements, and this is just a quick summary of the reserves, where we were in the beginning of last year, and what we did to get to where we are now. So it goes over what the actual revenues were, the expenses, and what changes have happened with the fundings into each reserve. So it's just a snapshot for the board to take a look at. In addition, what we're working on now is an updated four-year plan, which we'll go through as we start the budget process in January. We will bring to the board a proposed four-year plan changed. We have various things that are out there. We're still waiting for the $1 million in back building aid. We've not received that physical cash yet, even though we've received assurances from State Education Department. But we're working on the four-year plan. We'll bring it to you in January when we get to that point and move forward. Questions on fund balance? Thanks.
While Mrs. Lachman is reviewing the reserves and our current balances, I just want to plant some seeds. One of the discussions that we can have at budget time regarding our reserves is one of the reserves that the state allows us to have but must be voter-approved is the establishment of what is called a capital reserve. In order to create a capital reserve, it has to be by voter referendum, and it would have to be a proposition that could be attached to our budget ballot in the spring. The reason for doing so is it gives another opportunity to delegate funds into this reserve account in the event that capital expenses become necessary. The community has to vote to both create the reserve and to how the reserve will be spent. The reason why it's fiscally healthy to move in that direction is that we don't want to have to go to the community for a bond referendum each time we have a large capital expense. So the better plan is to begin to fund the capital reserve, knowing that we might have some large ticket capital expenses coming in the future. And then what that enables us to do is make repairs or make purchases that fall under the capital expense on a cyclical basis rather than all four rooms needing to be replaced at the same time for the $200 million. We want to include that as part of our four-year plan. It's something that we'll talk to the board more about when the budget cycle does begin in January, but it's something I want you to start to consider discussing because I think it would be fiscally responsible to do so.
Carrie, thank you for that presentation. And it's my understanding that Audit Committee already accepted this. It was already approved.
Under the requirements of the law, is the Audit Committee accepts the financial statements. They're required to accept them in order for us to submit to the state. The Board of Education accepts receipt of the financials. So the resolution is presented tonight for the board to accept the receipt of the financials. And then the financials have already been sent over to SED as per what the law requires us of October 15th, and the resolution will go up to them tomorrow once we have it from the board.
Excellent. I just wanted to publicly thank the members on the Audit Committee, Mrs. Maloio and Mrs. Marcus, and our community members, Mrs. Bidlato, Mr. Mayette, and Mr. Kaplan for participating in that. Thank you.
I just wanted to commend you for a job well done. In that last meeting, the auditors were very excited about the position that we're in, where we were, and where we're going. And, you know, to all the administration, our fellow board members, everybody's been really diligent about watching every penny, and we've had a little bit of good luck with, you know, reserves coming in. But a job well done, and I'm so happy that the pendulum has swung the other way.
So a couple of weekends ago, the board went to the New York State School Board Association Convention up in Lake Placid, and it was very informative. I think we were the only board on Long Island where all of our members were present. Is that true?
Suffolk County.
Suffolk County. So all of us went out. We got to know each other a lot better, and we came back with some interesting tidbits that we can bring back to the community. And I think we're going to just share them publicly, some of the things that we learned, some of the things we might bring back. We were kind of forced, given the task, to just succinctly summarize some of the things that we might bring forward and might bring back to the district. So I think, can we start with you, Mrs. Marcus?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it was beneficial for relationship building for me, being the new person on the board, meeting some vendors, and going to interesting sessions. So sessions that stood out in my mind that I went to were a couple on data. One was on protecting student data. And, you know, we bring in, we, it's the universal we. We bring in a bunch of different type of apps into the classroom and how that affects student data and who sells to who. So one side was a protection talking point of data. And then another interesting one that I went to, and Mrs. Weiss went with me, was one on analytics and how we can use data, that it's not a bad four-letter word, how we can really use it internally in the school district and within classrooms to really benefit the educational experience of every student, that teachers can use it to identify specific needs of students, really just internally. And teachers can share that to the next teacher, and principals can look at it, and superintendents can look at it, and just how you can really build, really a culture of individualization, actually, through special analytics. So that was good. And then my favorite one that I attended also with Mrs. Weiss was with the Ithaca School Board and their superintendent, who won Superintendent of the Year. So that's something to aim for. But the title of it was "The Relationship That Transforms Culture." There was actually a little documentary on what that board went through. They were having a very divisive community. That doesn't really apply, actually, truly to what we have here, but it was a very divided community and inequitable community. But basically, they went from the ground, you know, ashes, to winning awards and having a wonderful community involvement in their schools through finding out, you know, what is the relationship that can transform. And it was really all about being open. And I know that in years past, we've talked about transparency on the board, and it was like a whole new level of that. It was the board modeling conflict in a real respectable, kind way for the community, having robust discussions with the board members, with all their varying viewpoints. And, you know, I took it to mean, you know, an example of like iron sharpening iron. So you see everybody's different viewpoints, and then you trust, the community trusts the decision and the resolutions that the board comes up with because they see all of it. They even had teleconferences, town hall teleconferences, where community members could call in, and there would be an open discussion. So I just thought it was interesting how they built even a greater sense of community and trust through even greater openness, something I'm keeping in the brain.
I have to dito with what Julia and Becky said, that it was a good opportunity. You know, we are doing this job, and it's a full-time job, but it's like we're all doing it satellite. So we don't really have the opportunity to really dialogue with each other and engage, just even conversation, having a perspective of what everybody's background is and what passion that brought them to this position. And so that was really, for me, one of the great experiences of this trip. You know, the other thing is, I always say that my greatest lessons are the lessons that I learned outside the classroom. And at this conference, my greatest takeaway was the things that when I was sitting in each session, my sessions were very focused. I tried to pick a certain topic. One was the data and how we were going to use that to measure how well we've done and student achievement, you know, where do we want to get our students, and how do we get there, and be very focused on that. And so in doing that, I sat in a lot of sessions that where other districts share their successes and their failures. And with that, you know, you don't only get the speaker that's up there that says, you know, like talking about conflict and where they came from, and, you know, having a lack of non-participant engagement in their community, and figuring out what can we do to get more people involved. And then they come up with this tele, what was it, the Tele Town Hall? And we all just stood, and Becky and I just looked at each other, and then he gave the numbers like, well, we get like 6,000 people on this thing, and we get 100 people to a board meeting, you know? So we're able to bring in, and if you don't want to listen to it, if it comes up Friday at dinner time, you click it right off. But just to gather those kinds of successes and say, you know what, let me bring them back to Elwood. But furthermore, everybody else that's in that room brings either a question, or an observation, or an experience in their district, or trial in their district. And as a board member, where other professions, they get together and they have like a brainstorming or, we don't really have that besides training or, and down the road, I would love to see that, you know, Friday night at, you know, the local pub and just talking about, because we all have really the same kind of constraints. And it's always nice to hear how somebody else has tackled that and made success of it. So I don't want to go on. I actually summarized- I actually summarized a lot of them from each session, and I'll give that to Mary Lou and people who want reading, you know, you can look through it. Because I did sit through some very specific things, like Becky said, with the data and realizing that really looking with all the standard testing and the opt-in-out, what is really a good data? And visually, what are we looking at? And every time we look at this data, what is the question that we are trying to answer by looking at this data? And I think that that was a great takeaway. The second general takeaway that I wanted to share was, oh, let me see if I can find it, is that with every conversation, I learned that the districts that were successful, they focused on their vision, they articulated it, and that every conversation that they had, they relayed back to their vision. And we do a decent job of that. We do a pretty good job. But it's just like from every, every person. If they're doing a hiring plan, that comes through. If there, you know, if there's a teacher, that comes through. So I just thought that was, and they were very systematic about how they did it. And so I took a lot of notes on that and hope to further discuss that. Thank you.
So I also enjoyed myself over that weekend with my colleagues. Were able to really get to know each other a little bit better. We all are very, very different, but come to the table with the same purpose. And basically, that's greater student achievement. And so as long, doesn't matter how different our thoughts are, as long as we can come together respectfully with different opinions and continue to have open dialogue, there's nothing that we can't accomplish. Two of them that I wanted to highlight, measuring your board effectiveness, because I feel like, you know, over the years as a spectator, you know, you can see how people just go into different directions or maybe have, you know, ideas that they come to the table with that may be their idea, but not necessarily the idea of the entire board or the administration. And we last year as a board did a board self-evaluation because we felt that we need to keep ourselves in check, evaluate how we're doing with one another, how we're communicating with the community, and what we can do to better ourselves and be better board members for greater student achievement and to be a better community member. And they actually used the tool that we use, which is good to see. And then I was able to analyze, you know, what we did and what we can maybe do better going forward. But, you know, it's basically about accountability and performance, continuous improvement of the district, board behavior and relationships, the relationship with the superintendent and the rest of the administration. Board professional development, which was great fruitful discussion and I think is needed to remind you and always bring you back to why you're doing this. And this is for children and taxpayers and staff members, to make sure you're leading with clarity and, you know, to earn trust in the community because it all goes back to trust. The other thing that I did was financial planning. And it basically took a look at two different philosophies, a three-year and a five-year long-term planning options. And they basically just described some of the new laws regarding to adding, you know, funds to reserves and some of the things that we actually spoke to tonight with our audit report. There's new Chapter 514 that will add to the property tax report card and it's a schedule of reserve funds, its purpose, what you'll use them for. And basically, at the end of the day, with planning, it's a huge unknown with regard to state aid. And we're basically can really predict what our expenses are going to be and our increases within reason, but we never really know what's coming down the pipeline when it comes to state aid. And at the end of the day, we just need to be diligent about advocating for our district and, you know, working with our electeds to get the most that we can get.
I feel obligated to say I had a good time during that. I'm just kidding. Had a great time. There was a lot of team building and collaborative work and we were doing our best to go forward up there. We, I have to say, I think we spent, one day we were in the convention, spent about five to 10 hours and we didn't see the light of day. And we got to see ice rink, which was great, but there was a lot of takeaways. I had the option to go to many seminars at the convention, Lake Placid. Two of them that I really enjoyed were the communications workshop on managing community opposition and relationships with the community. The other one was the ESSA presentation, which is for, sorry, which student stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. The communications workshop had two great speakers, Hans Blake and Michelle Hullett, who came from California and Denver and really traveled all the way upstate to come give an amazing presentation. It was, I don't even know what you want to call it. There was matrices and data points and a lot of stuff that none of us got. And then all of a sudden, they tied it back into the community and it was like, wow, you know what? It's okay to be a small community because there was communities up in rural upstate New York that had 10,000 students, 10,000 community. And I'm like, how are we going to fit into this? But the matrices tied into Elwood being a small community, but having a lot of voice and working with the community in a succinct way. One of the things he touched upon was a three-step process. And it was that the board must be reasonable, sensible, and responsible. He spoke about learning how to be all three, not to choose one over the other. In order to give the community to know that the board is going to act in such a way. And I think from a lot of the seminars we went to, we picked up all the pieces that are going to bring back to the table to be able to act in such a way for this community and advocate for everybody. The other one I went to was the ESSA seminar and it was presented by a gentleman, Irish Schwartz. He opened up in true fashion like a teacher. He did a Dr. Seuss poem that, 10 minutes? And while I say you remember it, he got us, went off memory for the poem, so it's very impressive. But in the poem, he touched upon all the matrices that are surrounding the topic of every student succeeding. ESSA, if you don't know, is the replacement of the No Child Left Behind Act with a focus on equity and accountability. The State Education Department is looking into utilizing other subjects as data points. For example, incorporating social studies as a component to the high school level. The State Education Department submitted their plans and proposals to the U.S. Department of Education and is looking to get feedback and make adjustments. And we should hear something in January, February of 2018. All the workshops I attended gave me multiple takeaways. Elwood is way ahead of other districts and performing at levels that I was proud to discuss. People asked me for my email, my phone number, asked how we went and did live streaming, how we do our community forums, our surveys that we engage with the community. I was also asked from all the board members how they can get all their board members to attend a convention like we did. I'm told, no. I told them, I said, I respond to the need of a board member who is the comedian, one who is organized, one who knows their food, one who can motivate the rest, and one who can put all these attributes together and make a difference. I'm proud to report that our time in Lake Placid was just that. We took all the different components home with us to Elwood and we're going to use all those components to advocate to the best of our ability for this community. So I think Lake Placid was a huge success. And although the roads were windy and scary, we made it. We made it. It was a great trip and a time lost spent, and I look forward to next year's convention.
I agree. I think we all had a great time. And not only did we spend a great time with each other and get an opportunity to talk about what our vision is and what we see for future endeavors for Elwood, which was, you know, a wonderful opportunity to do that. You're also sitting at tables, having lunch with people from all over the state. So you realize how very different Long Island is from upstate New York. I was sitting next to someone whose the average bus trip was an hour and 15 minutes in the morning to get to school. So it was really interesting talking to those other people and realizing the different needs in our state. It's almost like, you know, we should have our own state down here because it's so, it's so very different. But as James said, I was really proud when you were listening to some of the success stories of these other people and they actually got to present, that we're already doing a lot of these things. And it felt good. It wasn't like, oh, I wish we could have that or I wish we did that. A lot of times I'm like, oh, we do that. So it felt great. So I, while they were hiking, I was in a law conference. I spent the first day in a law conference, so I thought I'll just update you on some of the things that they talked about during that. The first one was an update on the protection of transgender students. Basically, as you all know, Title IX, gender identity was protected under the Obama administration under a letter that he wrote, not voted on by Congress. Trump reversed that letter, so giving the states the right to decide how they define that. As we all know, New York State does protect gender identity and we have clear guidelines on that, but they thought this group that was presenting thought that this would likely go back to the Supreme Court at some point in the future. They discussed a little bit about immigration, immigrant students, that it's a federal law that we are not permitted to ask immigration status. So they went, and I'm sure Carrie, you know all about this, they went with a list of things that we are allowed to ask and those kinds of things. We are allowed to require residency proof, but not, we are not allowed to ask about immigration status. And they talked quite a bit about that. They talked about review of restrictions on law enforcement, interviews of students in school, and the very strict laws that surround that, parental consent, valid warrant or they committed a crime on student property. And they also just really reiterated the importance that everyone in the chain of command understands the law regarding that, the greeter's desk, the, you know, anybody who these folks might come into contact with that don't know that they have to call the superintendent and our legal team if the police officers or immigration officers come to the school. So, you know, they reiterated that point, that that would be really important, that everyone knows what the procedure is. Middle school curriculum changing a little bit for 2018-19. Students must take 1.75 units of career and technical ed. Used to be you had to take one of technical and .75 of home and careers, and now they're letting you divvy that up however you want. So I guess that would have curriculum implications. This one I'll skip because I want to tie that to something else. Elections and targeting, they talked about that. Are you allowed to plan things to draw a group of people to the election? And a new case this year actually sided with the school district, that you are allowed to plan games, art shows, all that kind of thing. A mere scheduling of an event does not establish a targeting. So you actually can schedule things and that was new for this year. They reviewed a lot of things about free speech, email, social media posts, group texts have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So that was a new case as well. So even though you have a closed friend group, if you post something in a group or if you're in a group chat, that is not protected and there's no reasonable expectation of privacy with that speech. So teachers and administrators of schools are not, their free speech is not always protected. So there were a couple of cases this year that if there's a matter of public concern and if the district can show that the speech was disruptive to the district's functioning, then that free speech is not protected and you can... Faces from Mary action, thank you. So that was interesting, I thought, even if it's on your Facebook page, that kind of thing. There was a new case of teacher and student texting things. And the takeaway from that was that the district has to have a clear expectation of what, when teachers are allowed to communicate with students via text, email, that kind of thing, that the emails always have to go through, the school email, that you shouldn't text or have remind-me's between certain periods of the day, you know, in the evening up until, so there was, you know, a recommendation that we set the expectation in the beginning of the year and then those teachers can be held responsible for that. Want to say something? Yeah. So all communication between the teachers has to be transparent, no ambiguity, accessible, a matter of public record and professional. So there were like three or four cases this year about that. So the last one that I wanted to talk to you about was starting in 2019-20, the State Department is mandating that we have a district-wide and school-building comprehensive developmental school counseling and guidance program. They have to have advisory councils that will meet at least two times a year and submit a report to the Board of Education. I went to a session about paving the way for school-based mental health initiatives and it was really, really interesting. They pointed out statistics like 50% of all mental health issues are demonstrated before the age of 14, that there's a lot of evidence-based practice that we know works, but we don't always use interventions that we know are effective, but we don't really use them on a consistent basis. And they have a lot of folks, and this person happened to be representing one of those companies that will come in and do school-based initiatives. But what she said was interesting and I'm wondering if when we look at these guidance councils, and we're looking at the guidance program now and we're doing a lot of these things, are we really intervening early with evidence-based practice that we know will assist the students? And is it something, you know, should we do a needs assessment? Is it something that we're not looking at? And I found it interesting. She had a lot of statistics about how graduation rates, people taking AP exams who formerly had such severe anxiety, and attendance, and attendance was the biggest one that made a difference in the lower grades, intervening with anxiety and that kind of thing, changes in attendance. So I thought looking at something like that was really interesting. And that's it. But yeah. Shush. Okay, so anything else about Lake Placid, Dr. Foster, that you want to comment on?
Yeah, I didn't have a good time at all. Actually, I want to commend the board for the time you dedicated away from your families. As Mrs. Fried indicated, it is a rare occurrence to have a full board agree to attend a lengthy getaway like this, but I think the amount of team building, collaboration, communication, and discovery that took place was well worth your time. I appreciate the investment you made. It was a pleasure to see some of you in a more social atmosphere and really get to see some of the personalities that, you know, helped us work together so nicely. And I'm glad that you took away as much as you did. I took away equally as much, you know, having had the opportunity to attend a number of workshops myself. It is always amazing, you know, who you can learn from and who you can learn with. And I think that we all left feeling focused and dedicated to our work. And I think it was really a very valuable use of time. And yes, I think we've managed to have some fun in there as well. So I appreciate your attention to it. Next year's conference will be held right around the same time, but we are fortunate that they rotate it regionally. So next year's convention will be held in Manhattan, which might be easier on all of us, particularly those who get car sequenced heated in the rear of a minivan.
Okay, so we're going to go to financial matters. We're going to recommend that the board acknowledge the receipt for audits. If no one minds, we'll take all of those together. Can I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Marcus, second by Mrs. Weiss. Questions or comments? All in favor? Five-zero? We'll take the, does anyone mind if we take action items altogether? No?
No objection.
So can I have a motion to accept action items? One, personnel agenda, special education, the audit report, and the corrective action plan, and the business agenda as per attached. Motion by Mrs. Mammalito, second by Mr. Tamia. Questions or comments? All in favor? Five-zero? Five-zero. Any items not listed on the agenda that anyone would like to discuss? No? Okay, so we're up to our second residence remarks. Remarks are limited to the items voted on and or discussed at this business meeting. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves in any organizations they represent. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Public discussions of now is relating to staff, Catholic, students, or others at which their reputation, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is pro feminine. Would you like to make a resident comment? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn the business meeting of October 26, 2017? Mrs. Malito, second by Mr. Tomio. All in favor? Five-zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you, all of you at home.